So let's get the meeting started. I'd like to call the special meeting of the Eastline Board of Finance to order on Wednesday, April 29th at 7:05 PM. The first order of business is approval of the minutes. Has everybody had an opportunity to review those minutes? If so, I have a motion to approve the regular meeting minutes of March 11th, 2020.
Um, I'll, I'll move to approve the minutes of the Board of Finance regular meeting of Wednesday, March 11th, 2020.
I'll call for a second and then any discussion if there is any. Okay, so we have Anne Santoro making the motion and Rich Steele seconding the motion to approve the minutes. Is there any discussion? If there's no discussion, I'll call for a vote. What I'll do is I'll call each person's name individually. And if you could just say aye or nay or abstain. Anne Santoro.
Aye.
Anne Chikello. She's not present yet. Okay, Rich Steele.
Aye.
Peter DeRosa.
Aye.
John Birmingham.
Aye.
And I am an I, so for the record, the minutes of March 11th, 2020 are approved, 5:00. Moving on to the special meeting minutes of April 8th, 2020. Okay, the order this time, is there any discussion or comments about the meeting minutes? Are there any comments or corrections for the minutes of April 8th, 2020? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion to approve those minutes. From somebody?
I'll, I'll, I'll move.
Okay.
Minutes.
Great, we have Peter DeRosa making the motion. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Anne Santoro seconds. John Birmingham, how do you vote?
Aye.
Anne Santoro.
Aye.
Rich Steele.
Aye.
Peter DeRosa.
Aye.
Anne Chikello with us yet? No, and I am an I, so motion is approved, 5:00. With that, the next agenda item are reports. We'll first hear from the First Selectman.
Hello.
Hi, Mark.
Hi, Mark.
Hi, um, wow, you got to be quick tonight without the Board of Ed on your agenda. Maybe just a quick town update. I, um, I don't have anything written down as much as, uh, open for your questions and comments. A couple of things come to mind. We're still in obviously a partial shutdown mode. We have, uh, you know, one or two people coming into the departments, um, daily, uh, many working remotely. But we're, we see the end in sight. Probably in a couple more weeks, we'll come back to a full-time status for employment. As there's plenty of work to be done and tasks to do, and it seems like, um, uh, with the wearing of masks and, disinfecting our workplaces, that we'll be in good shape. And there's a few spots where we might need to separate desks and etcetera. We have some tight quarters, especially at the town hall. I don't anticipate unlocking the town hall and opening for business until, probably after, after Memorial Day, um, frankly, and we're busy now looking at, I comment, I refer to them as sneeze shields, uh, but the Plexiglas shields at, at counters throughout our town. You know, Parks and Rec and, and the office and all the way down. You can, you know, you've, in our town. We have many places where the public comes up to a counter and we need to, um, keep our people safe. This is gonna go on for quite some time, so we need to take precautions on that. We're in the process. Turns out Plexiglas is very, very expensive, uh, but we're in the process of looking at that now. We have had a surge in, um, active cases with COVID. We've had a surge of deaths in Eastline. Almost, almost exclusively, these are coming from the long-term, long-term care facilities. Deaths in the last two days, an elderly man, elderly woman, uh, both, uh, from the long-term care facility. The state has been slow in helping the, those facilities, um, and slow in, um, down those facilities, um, to keep COVID out throughout the state. You've seen that actually throughout the country. But I, I, I think we, uh, in the towns, I think the directors of these facilities were looking for guidance and didn't get a lot from the state. But that said, um, we're not seeing a lot from the general citizen population, which is a good sign. Very few cases, I know of only one that I've heard documented, were, was a transmittal of the disease in an outdoor atmosphere. I say this because the biggest struggle I'm gonna have, um, in, in my job, um, is figuring out the beaches. It, it seems like that should be, you know, very low on the priority and it kinda is, except we're getting cabin fever. I can tell by the, um, the subject matter of the complaints that are coming into the First Selectman's office these days. Complaints about seagulls, complaints about kids riding the wrong way on, uh, streets and, and sidewalks and such. And, um, people, uh, been at this long enough. People are going outside. Last Saturday was a very, very beautiful day. I think it was Saturday, right? Downtown resembled 4th of July. It was packed on the sidewalks. It was packed on the boardwalk. The beaches were busy. Um, and it was only 63 degrees. Um, we're gonna have a warmer day this coming Sunday. And I think the temperatures are gonna go up. I'm very concerned about what we're gonna do with the beaches. I'm meeting, an emergency meeting with Parks and Rec on Monday, um, concerning whether to keep the beaches open or not. We wanna keep them open. There's talk about making them resident only for the year. While that's not technically allowed, this is emergency times and these are emergency, uh, measures we'd be taking for the safety and health of, of our citizen. We might not do day passes that will greatly hamper the revenue side of the Parks and Rec. As we would only sell, uh, annual passes and they make a lot of money from the day passes, non-resident annuals. But I think we need to take a step in the safe direction. We're looking at that, looking at certain signage. Waterford's closed their beach today. Old Lime announced they're closing their beaches. The state parks are going to operate at 50% capacity. And really at 100% capacity, they don't, they don't get enough, I mean, uh, there's an overflow situation on most summer weekends. Very concerned about that and what that's gonna do to the beaches. Um, you know, I use this example. I've been on a beach with my family, especially in the early days when the kids were little and run around with pails and shovels. And, you know, you set your blanket down and you think you have a nice spot and an hour and a half later, you are surrounded and people are literally, their blankets right up against yours. And, and that does happen and, and, uh, in the cooks and hole in the wall. It happens, um, on the 4th of July weekend and all that, and it can't happen. Uh, we need to socially distance, throughout the summer more than likely. So we're scratching our heads on that, on, um, not allowing walk-ins. That would be, um, uh, everyone would have to come in by car and then we would limit the number of cars and therefore the number of people in our parks. If the governor lifts some of the orders, um, with the president rolled out last week on phase one, phase two, phase three. Phase one is, um, no more than 50 people at a gathering. Uh, that would knock out our summer concert series. That would knock out certainly Celebrate Eastline and that's more than likely gonna be postponed. So we're struggling with that. We're struggling with that part of it. We value our parks and our open spaces, um, in our town. And it's unfortunate, we're at this place, but we gotta make some hard decisions and, and, um, as, as you know. So that's where we're at with most of that. We are, as you know, we've cut the budget. Board of Selectmen voted unanimously the other evening to, um, lop off about $300,000 of the budget we sent to you. So we're gonna have suggested cuts for you when you get to that place. And I know the Board of Ed is doing the same thing and, um, lastly, I, I, is it on your agenda, the, um, Public Safety Building is on your agenda? And Anne, I think will fill you in as she's on the committee, but we did receive favorable bids. Um, and we're going to be very close to, um, moving that along through appropriations. So in the next week or two, um, we, i- if the Vision Committee can decide on one of the vendors, one of the contractors, um, we'll, I'll move it to the Board of Selectmen and then to you for, um, consideration. These, these bids don't last forever. I don't know the expiration. I'll get that for you. Um, uh, we're ready to go on that. So timing's tough, but, um, but it's time to go on that. So, any questions?
Let's see, I, I have a question, Mark. Um, how much guidance are you getting from, uh, Ledge Light with respect to beach openings? How, how specific and how detailed? I feel like I've, I've lost sight of them and all of this.
Buried in it. The, the, Steve is doing a remarkable job. I'm in, I'm in a half a dozen meetings with him weekly. And we just had our COG meeting yesterday. We talked just about that, about all the towns in our COG, 22 towns. All having the same messaging as far as parks and recreational spaces go. All of us leaving them open with these guidelines or, or having to all shut down because of, uh, the lack of guidelines or the inability to administer and enforce. That's the work, enforce the guidelines. You know, what some person's viewpoint is of the CDC recommendation of face masks might not be someone else's. And, and I can only envision that being, um, a point of, um, conflict, uh, with people meeting on beaches. It already has on board, on the boardwalk. Um, uh, there's a lot of opinion on that. But Steve's been marvelous. We're all kind of, I, I, and I've noticed this in, in these kind of situations, we all shift and we, we look to the state for guidance. Or the next level up, if you will. Uh, Parks and Rec is looking to me for guidance. I'm looking to the state for guidance. Somewhere in there, Ledge Light's going to give us guidance. Uh, they're going to come up with posters and messaging, uh, branding about use of face masks in public spaces and about six feet socially, uh, social distancing, etcetera. So we're all on the same message.
Okay.
I hope that answers your question.
Yeah, thanks. I, yeah, I mean, I think we're, you know, we're gonna need them to, um, to help out with the restaurants reopening and everything. We don't have our own individual health department, so we do rely on them for all that guidance.
Yeah. Yeah.
Thanks, thank you.
You got it.
Any other questions for the First Selectman? Anybody? If not, I do have a couple of questions for you, Mark. First, thanks for the update. Um, I have been wondering, do our first responders have all of the PPE that they need during the crisis to, when they make calls? How are we, how are we handling that? Do we have enough?
Well, they, it started off and we're in a very bad place. It's gotten much, much better. We have a weekly pickup now. There was conflicting opinions, spectrum of opinions. I was getting leadership telling me we had enough and a few people on the crew saying, these are awful. Uh, the bottom line is, yes, they have PPEs now. The, the distribution and the responsibility of those PPEs doesn't rest with my department or even the Emergency Management Director. For instance, our ambulance association is and, uh, they're the ones who are most critical in need of the PPEs. But, um, Region Four, which is a DEMIS, Region Four, Department of Emergency Management and Homeland Security, uh, they're the ones who supply us. So when the state gets a shipment, the four DEMIS regions get their portion and then they're distributed. And they're distributed weekly. I believe it was today we got our, uh, our updated PPEs. So I would say, yes, we're in good shape with PPEs. And I would say, you know, I'm not the, I'm not Dr. Fauci, uh, and I know as much as any of you watching TV. But it would seem like there's a leveling off going on, um, although they'll be vigilant in their, um, protection throughout the next several months. Um, but it would seem to be that they've, they've reached that place where they, they're comfortable with their level, yes.
That's good to hear. Um, and then lastly, I'm curious. I think I heard you mentioned in a previous meeting that there are less calls that the police are actually making now with everybody self-quarantining and the stay-at-home order. Is that also true for the first responders? The, the fire departments at this time, or the question is, is there an increase in activity or a decrease?
Different activity.
Different.
Different activity, right? So there's no traffic accidents. No matter what insurance company you have, they're giving you money back right now because there's no traffic accidents. Notice how I said it that way. But that's true, right? So there's that and there's, um, you know, less, um, less cars on the road. There were. Now they're starting to be, it's picking up. There, there's still a lot of ambulance calls, of course, with COVID that, that complicates things. There's more cleaning that needs to be done of the whole, the whole vehicle needs to be cleaned when a patient goes into an ambulance, goes up to the hospital and comes back. The whole thing, it takes multiple people, um, a long period of time to clean out one vehicle. So it's changed. The workload has changed. The man-hours have changed a bit. But yeah, it's, it's actually kinda quiet. You know, there's more domestic calls. But there's less kids hanging out on the street corner. Um, so it's just different. It's different. We would see, listen, it's summer, uh, com- coming up. We're gonna see the calls pick up. We're gonna see people coming out. Rhode Island is lifting their stay-at-home orders this next Friday. So all of a sudden, there's gonna be people out on the streets up and running. It's gonna happen here too, and, and those calls will come back. But, yeah, right, they did spend, um, I'd say a, a good month's period of time, the police did, um, where things were really chill. Uh, and they were just kind of, um, protecting us just by riding around and what, you know, we had a, a rash of burglaries. Car burglaries, um, and that still is happening. Uh, tell all your friends, lock your car at night. Always, always, even if you're running in to get something in your house and running out in a little bit, lock it up. So, good question.
Okay. All right. Thank you, Mark. Um, with that, we'll move on to the Finance Director's report. Anna?
Okay, yes, good evening. Um, uh, I have some good news. Today, the education cost sharing, um, the final, um, portion was deposited into our bank account. So the S funds are here. Um, we also received notice today that the, um, Town Aid Road Funds will be deposited to our account tomorrow. So, um, we've, you know, we've received those, um, those grants. So, um, I'll talk first about the estimated unassigned fund balance for the end of the year. So at the end of February, um, I was projecting that, um, the revenues would be a little bit higher. They dropped off about $300,000. A portion of that, um, a, 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 a good portion of that is related to the Board of Education tuitions. And when I went back and looked at January, my projection for January was the same as this month. When I updated it last month, it was, I had had a conversation with, um, uh, Mariana Stevens at the Board of Education to get input from her. I did speak with her this afternoon and explained to her, um, how my analysis had, had, have, you know, have worked out. So she's going to, um, drill a little deeper on her end and get back to me in the next day or so. So, um, at the end of April, um, I'll have, um, you know, a more refined number. One of the things that she mentioned to me, what, um, is that there is a, um, and she has to look into this, is, the thought that some of the, um, the individual parents that are paying for tuition to send their children to our schools are not making their monthly payments because the children aren't in school right now. We are getting our payments from Salem, but there are a certain number of, um, other individuals that actually pay the tuition themselves for their children to attend our school. So she's gonna look into that and, um, we'll have better information, um, on that. I mean, I think, um, one of the, the reasons that, um, our revenue picture isn't as glum as it could be is, is due to the fact that we had, we were really through nine months of our 12-month fiscal year before all of the, um, the chaos started happening. And so, you know, we had, you know, gone a long way and our revenues were coming in good. We have a few areas where, um, like for example, the building permits, um, they're coming in, um, quite a bit larger than, um, you know, what, what, what we had projected. And so, uh, even our conveyance taxes. So, y- you know, we're, we're still looking good. I mean, there was one day this week, um, when I was reviewing cash receipts that were coming in. The building department submitted $16,000 in building permits. So building permits are still coming in. So things are, you know, we're still in a good position, at least to see this fiscal year through.
Very good news, Anna. Thank you. I do have a question for you. Who has been applying for COVID relief? How much has been applied for? And have we gotten any funds, uh, from those applications yet?
Are you talking about for the tax deferments?
No, I'm talking about COVID relief. So I think you had mentioned, or Mark had mentioned, we had to run out and buy laptops for town employees, you know, because the town hall was gonna be shut down. But a FEMA application, grant application.
So we have, we have done, um, the town has, um, um, gone to the, uh, sent, sent an attendee to the briefing that they have whenever FEMA funds become available to us. And then at, at some point, um, they will advise us when we need to start submitting our paperwork. I mean, the event is still ongoing at this point. Typically, you wait until the event is over and then you start, you start submitting your documentation for the program.
Okay. Is there any idea of the lag time in receiving those funds after the application is submitted?
You know what, it, that, you know what?
Once in years.
Event to event.
It could be years, Mark. Is that what you said?
A year or several, several months, yes.
Yeah, this is not gonna be a quick turnaround because it's not typically like when we have a storm event that we, um, where we receive FEMA funds for, that's like localized, i.e. northeast section of the, of the country. This is countrywide. So there's gonna be substantially more applications for the, you know, for the, for the, for them to review on this program.
I am asking because I'm wondering if there's any possible revenue stream that we could include in next year's budget as a result of FEMA or federal reimbursements. But it doesn't look like we can count on any of those funds coming back into the operating budget next year. Maybe 2022. Would that be a good assumption?
Agreed.
Okay, thank you. Does anybody else have any questions for Anna Johnson?
I do.
Anne Chikello?
I, yeah. Um, sorry, I couldn't get on right away. I have a little computer difficulties. So when you get the funds for, from FEMA, did, does it go to the state first? And then like the governor has to give it to the different towns or how does that work exactly?
So, um, we complete the applications and we submit them to, um, to the representative for our area for the FEMA program. And each, um, it, typically there are different categories within the program. Like some is like wages, some is equipment, some is materials. So, and sometimes there, there were even, um, what they call projects. So you submit your application with all of the required supporting documentation. That FEMA rep reviews our application and, and they make a determination as to, i- if what you're submitting qualifies for the program. And then it's based upon that as to whether or not you receive funds.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions for Anna?
Yeah, oh, go ahead, go ahead, John. You first.
Anna?
Yes.
You mentioned the ECS, yeah, that, uh, you got this part of it or the second half. What was that number? How much was that?
Um, so it's, uh, 3,000,000,
You know, and the Town Aid, what, what was that figure?
Okay, so, um, we were receiving, um, the full amount. It was about $320,000.
Okay, cause on, on your sheet, it says 34144.
Wait, there's a second, there's another piece of that. That's, um, what they call a municipal aid grant. And that's about 22,000. So that makes the full, um, the, the full, um, 341,000.
Okay. And on the total, on the bottom of the second sheet, on the backside, you have, it looks like a surplus of 677,463. I know that's just.
Right, that's what I'm projecting, um.
I know it's an estimate. How close, will that be less or more? Can't you tell right now?
Well, I, I look at that every month to, this is the analysis that I did for the end of March. At the end of this month.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Anne Santoro, did you have a question?
Yes. Oh, go ahead. Did, did Anne, to finish? Oh, you're okay. Yeah, Anna, um, uh, the current year tax, let's see, I'm gonna look at your revenue account status of, uh, March 31st, the one included. And it's also referenced in the, uh, end-of-year document as well. But the, the current, um, grant list at this time, about $366,000 still yet to be paid. And then looking at the other document, you're projecting that, that will come by June. So this is, this is tax money that people, let's say, owed in January and, you know, are still paying presumably.
Well, it's, it's taxes that are, um, actually at this point past due. Whether it's just the taxes or someone that hasn't paid taxes back to July or even before July.
Right.
That's just the current year taxes. Okay, I'm, I'm, I'm sorry about that. Yes.
Yeah, so my, my question is, so you, you expect this from your other document. It looks like you expect this amount to be paid. So is your thinking that, um, nothing that's happening now will affect that 366,000? I mean, this is nothing to do with, you know, the three-month, uh, extension for the next set of taxes due.
Correct.
So, so you think that, given our circumstance and what you know so far, that you think that's a, that's a pretty safe estimate and that we'll be down to zero there, you know, in terms of, that, that will be.
I, I still, I still, um, like, when I looked at the end of March, I still felt that, um, we had the room to make 100% of what we projected this year. We budgeted at 90, when we, um, did the mill rate, we budgeted saying that we were gonna collect 98.4% of what the bill was.
Okay, okay. That's fine. Um, and then we'll eventually have some conversation about the rest, you know, with what will happen down the road and, and how that analysis, you know, is made. Cause that, that's something that I'm, you know, concerned about and just kinda wanna know what, what will factor in there. You know, what, what information would you consider or John in the Tax Department consider in making that determination, you know? But we can get to that at some other point, but that, that, that's clear. Thanks.
Any other questions for Anna? Okay, hearing no further questions, we'll move on to new business. The first item up is a request to reallocate up to $50,000 from the health insurance account. To move towards emergency accommodations for our first responders per Executive Order 7P. Anna, would you talk about that or is that Mark?
Right, Anna.
Okay, so this is one of the executive orders. And so, um, Chief Finkelstein had, um, And so Chief Finkelstein had come to us and asked where we could obtain the funds to pay for this. Included in your packets was the list of establishments that they made arrangements with. That the, the one, okay, so there's a couple that are in, so like the one in Groen and I thought there were two. Oh, Groen in Norwich. Those two facilities, everyone in our Demus Region 4 is, is using those. And so each, each town within the region had to submit what establishments they were going to use for this executive order to the emergency management Region 4 office. And this is actually, as I understand it, posted on their website. And so if, if any emergency responder, first responder staff within the town felt that they did not want, you know, they had an exposure and did not want to go home to their families, per this executive order, we would have to put them up in an establishment. And it also extends to other first responders that may not work for the town but live in town. So we would be obligated to provide for them. So that's why we, you know, we were looking for some funds so that in the event that someone requested this, we would have the ability to pay for it. So at this point in time, I did check with emergency management today. They have had no requests for this. And this would obviously go through the end of this fiscal year. So when I was going through the budget, I, at the end of the month, I noticed we were going to have some funds left in the health insurance account. And so since this is more or less health-related, it made sense to, to request that we be able to use this, this source of funds for this executive order should we need to.
I have some very boring accounting questions to ask with regard to how we're going to track this. So I'll first ask if anybody else has any questions on the nature of this appropriation request.
Just, just, just trying to understand what this is. You're saying that if an emergency personnel feels that they've been exposed, they would be put up in a hotel rather than exposing their family to that. And no one in East Line has used that service. In southeastern Connecticut, has any of the other towns used? Trying to understand the risk that we're taking with this.
You know what, Peter? That's a good question. I do not have an answer to that question.
I, I do through the cog. Yes, there, there have been many that have used this. Once one of our first responders gets COVID, well, we're, we're under an obligation period, whether they just feel like they've been exposed or they test to the positive, we will be under an obligation to house them for their quarantine.
So, so there is a, there's a good chance that some of this money would be used, I guess, is what I'm getting at.
Well, we've gone this far. I, we, I, we need to have it available. That's for sure.
No, I understand that.
And we need to have it available with a snap of a finger because it could be happening right now. It could be happening tonight. So, yes.
Okay. I'm just trying to understand it. Thank you.
Get it. Yeah.
And Anna, that would cover the, the two-week quarantine period?
Yes, it could come up to the 14 days. Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Anna, I, I had a question. Looking at that health and dental account, I think I'm reading a little over 106,095% used to date. So if we encumber another 50,000, is that leaving you sufficient dollars in that account? Or would you have to transfer to somewhere else or?
Actually, for, for, for what we owe for health insurance, we have purchase orders encumbered for that. Okay, so we have, we've already encumbered the funds that we need to pay the remaining portions of our health and dental for the rest of the fiscal year.
All right. Thank you. And one question, I, so it's an optional system. I mean, it, it's a mandate from the state. We know that through executive order. But it's optional for the first responder. They, if they chose to convalesce at home, they could do that. And if not, they could go to a hotel that we have designated. Is that how it works?
Yes.
Okay.
Thanks.
Any other questions regarding this request? Then I'll, I'll come to my question, Anna. I'm wondering, we, we have a contingency account 120 that we move funds in and out of. Does it make sense to set up a COVID contingency account line item in Department 120 so we can easily track all of the expenses that we're incurring as a result of the COVID epidemic?
Well, what we've done in our accounting system is we've set up what's called a tracking code. So anytime we have encumbered a purchase order that's relative to COVID-19, we, we assign it that tracking code. So then we'll be able to pull up that tracking code and it'll show us all the expenses that we've had.
So where would you put, where would you move these funds to? Travel and entertainment? Or, or would you move it to the Niantic Fire Department and Flanders Fire? Where, where are the funds going once we move it out of healthcare?
I'm not proposing to move it out of the healthcare account. I'm just proposing to, I'm just seeking the authorization to use the funds in the health insurance fund for, I'm going to, you know, if we have any of these, we're going to charge it right to the health insurance account because.
I see what you're saying.
My thought process was that it's more or less health-related, so we'll just leave it in that account.
It's expanding the definition of, if needed.
As long as we have a class code, like you're saying, where we can easily run a report identifying all the COVID-related expenses, I don't have a problem with that at all. That makes sense to me also. Any other questions or comments? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion to just for number one on our list, to authorize the $50,000.
I'll make a motion. I move to authorize the use of up to $50,000 available in account 01-01-114-100-127, parentheses, health slash dental care, and parentheses, for the purpose of State of Connecticut Executive Order 7-P for housing-related expenditures for first responders and healthcare workers.
Thank you, Ann Chikello. Do I have a second?
Yes.
Thank you, Rich Steele. Okay, again, I think just for ease of, for the recording secretary, I'll go down the list and I'll ask for your vote. First, I'll ask, is there any further discussion with the motion on the floor? Hearing none. Ann Chikello, what's your vote?
Yes.
Rich Steele?
Yes.
Ann Santoro?
Yes.
John Birmingham?
Yes.
Peter DeRosa?
Yes.
And I myself am a yay. So motion carries 600. With that, we'll move on to new business. B, transfers to dispatch, part-time and overtime accounts, $29,865. Let me see if this rolled up. Is maybe more, more is rolled up? Nope, that's it.
Okay, so I can talk about this. So at many of the meetings this year, I've talked about the dispatch accounts, in particular, the overtime account. So basically what happens after all of the, the full-timers have their shifts, there's remaining open shifts for, that we seek part-timers to fill them. And depending on, you know, from week to week, the availability of the part-timers that we have depends on how many of those shifts that we fill. So if we, if we get part-timers to fill them all, that's great. We're just paying part-timers. However, on many occasions, there aren't enough part-timers that fill those shifts. So then we use the full-time dispatchers and we're paying them time and a half to fill an eight-hour shift. And thus, that's the dilemma that we've had with the overtime this year. And in addition to that, during the course of this fiscal year, I believe it was two of our dispatchers were out for, you know, several weeks with medical issues. So we're at the point in the year where we just have no more funds left available in the part-time account to transfer to the overtime account. And we actually need some additional funds in the part-time account because of what we've transferred to the overtime account. So when Sergeant Maisick and I reviewed the, both of those accounts, we came up with what, you know, an estimated weekly amount would be to get us through the rest of the year and identified what we would need relative to funding. When I reviewed the budget, I noticed the balance that was remaining in the part-time clerical account in the police department. For a period of time this year, that employee was on a leave of absence, doing some skilled work for the state of Connecticut. And so I asked Chief Finkelstein if he would be amenable for us transferring that $11,000 to the dispatch department. He agreed. And then the recommendation is to take the remaining portion that's needed from the contingency account.
Okay. Does anybody have any questions for Anna?
I do. So Anna, is the total amount that you need then, you're asking for, is it $21,340 altogether?
Twenty-one, no, it's actually more like 29,000.
29,000. And you, you want to take the 11,000 from the, the police account. Is that correct?
And then 18,865 from the contingency account.
Okay, thank you. I was just trying to get it clarified.
Oh, yes. I mean, that's yeah, I mean, every week those accounts are, are over expended until we get this taken care of.
Okay, well, based on the trend of the overage of these accounts for the first nine months, I think it's a reasonable request to ask for this amount for the remaining three months, just based on the historical trend. So I suppose I don't have an issue with this. So I'm on questioning. Does anybody else have any questions?
It seems reasonable since the overtime's been banging all year long, so.
So if there is no more discussion, can I have a motion to approve?
I can move to, move to approve a transfer in the amount of $11,000 from account 01-25-216-100-412, parentheses, part-time clerical police, to account 01-25-215-100-214, parentheses, dispatch, overtime OT, and transfer 18,865 from account 01-01-120-200-500, parentheses, contingency, as follows. part-time dispatchers, parentheses, and $10,340 to account 01-25-215-100-214, parentheses, dispatch OT.
Thank you, Ann Santoro. Do I have a second?
Second.
Was that John?
Yes.
Okay. John Birmingham, second. Okay. Any further discussion? Hearing none, I'll, I'll call for a vote. Ann Santoro?
Yay.
Ann Chikello?
Yay.
John Birmingham?
Yay.
Peter DeRosa?
Yay.
Rich Steele?
Yay.
And I am a yay. Motion passes 600. With that, the last item under new business is to approve a transfer in the amount of $8,220 for the Niantic Fire Department.
So Chief Dwyer had come to us with his estimate for additional funds that he will need in the part-time firefighter account to make it through the year. Part of the reason that he needs these extra funds is the COVID-19 situation. He is actually having staffing at one of, at one of the firehouses 24 hours a day, seven days a week because he just feels to get, you know, to get out to the calls when they come in, that this is important.
Are there any questions for Anna? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion.
So, one question, please.
Sure.
You had mentioned earlier with the allocation of funds from the health and dental that you have a tag for COVID-related expenditures. Do they fall under that tagging system then? Is that?
That's for operating expenses. For, for payroll, we were not able to add another
Oh, okay.
code to track this. I mean, it's, 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 well, the way the payroll functions is just, it's just different. It's, it's not as simple to do it on the payroll side. So actually, all of the departments are tracking any of their time that's related to the COVID so that, you know, we'll be able to assimilate the total wages relative to this pandemic.
Okay, thank you.
So is that, just to follow up on which is that tracking that you just talked about, Anna? Is that like, they go out on a call, that's tracked or it's not? We're amping up, we're, we're ramping up coverage in case?
So his, his, so he, so he is actually keeping up the coverage at the stations, I believe it's in the headquarters, so that they're 24/7 covered.
Right.
So we just have someone on staff there.
Right, okay.
They're there relative.
But that's not flagged as a COVID-specific expense?
No, so, so basically, when they're, when the departments are submitting their, their time sheets and in most particular, it's, it's our public safety departments, they're noting what's COVID-related on their time.
Okay. So in the, in the future, if you can, okay. Okay, thank you.
Any further questions? Okay, if not, I'll entertain a motion.
Okay, I'll move to approve a transfer in the amount of $8,220 from account 01-01-120-200-500, parentheses, contingency, and parentheses, to account 01-25-217-100-612, parentheses, PT, FF, NFD, parentheses.
Thank you, Ann Chikello. Is there a second? Thank you, John. Now we'll move on to a vote. John Birmingham?
Yes.
Ann Chikello?
Yes.
Rich Steele?
Yes.
Ann Santoro?
Yes.
Peter?
Yes.
And I am a yay. Motion carries 600. With that, we'll move on to D, appropriate $85,307.44 in, I'm not even going to say it. I'll call it a P grant.
A P show.
If you, if you just, actually, Camille, if you just look, it's like, in, like peg, pet, and ear, so.
A P show.
Pet, yeah, yeah.
Pegpisha, pegpisha.
Yeah, there you go. All right.
Sounds like a skin disease.
Oh, boy.
So Mark, did you want to lead in with this one?
This is the, well, I can start it. You can give all the fine details. This is the grant that we talked about, that our IT lady, Carmen Ames, and Mike Mines, who is a volunteer, but he sits on our cable advisory board, and he's a brilliant mind and all into his IT stuff. And the bottom line is, this is, when you pay your cable bill every month, there's always all these extra charges. It's never just the charge. It's all that, just like the old phone bill. And one of those charges was, you know, collecting a dollar or two every month from every cable subscriber for education and community programming. And we applied, as did tens of thousands of towns, but we were rewarded of the full grant. And this grant will not only bring our cable television facility, the hub of our cable television facility, over to the new police building, but will also give us, and you'll be happy about this, Board of Finance, it will give us a new audio and video equipment in the conference room at the town hall. We'll be able to live stream on YouTube. I don't know if it's going to be HD digital, but it's going to be substantially better. The microphones will be better. When we're having a presentation, that person in the presentation will be able to have a clipped-on mic or a handheld mic if they're, you know, making presentations off the easel or in the room. So we're looking forward to it. It's long overdue. It's something that I was hoping to accomplish years and years ago. But we're doing it by grant, so we're very excited about that. This does help us in our move into the new police station, new public safety building, in that all that equipment over at the dispatch center has to be moved over. One of those items is the cable television access, and this is paying for that.
John, we're gonna have to up our game with our camera.
You might need to put on makeup, John, and Peter, and, yeah, for your close-ups coming up. If they go in HD, I'm in trouble.
So I have a question.
Yeah.
I was wondering if, for instance, if there's a court, if there's, like, in the wetlands that is being appealed to court, will it be easier to do the transcript with the new audiovisual equipment?
It's a good question. Now, we still need to purchase that equipment. That wouldn't be part of, I don't believe. Anna, correct me if I'm wrong.
You know what? I don't have an answer for that. I know that
I don't think so.
both Carmen and Mike are, you know, in this meeting. I think they would be able to answer that question.
I don't believe that's the case. We still are in search of getting, oh, we have a quest to get that done as well. And that is to upgrade that equipment.
Okay, thank you.
If it pleases the board, I see Carmen and Mike are attendees. I could ask them to answer that question. Should I do that?
Sure.
Yeah, that would be great.
We have apology.
Hi Carmen, this is Camille. Can you hear me?
Hi, Camille. I can hear you.
Great, terrific. So I think you've been following along on this pegpisha grant. Did you hear Ann Chakello's question, and would you be able to answer that for her? First, let me say this is Carmen Ames, the IT director from the town hall.
Hi, thanks for considering this appropriation. Yeah, in terms of transcriptions, there are still questions about the legalities and the framework. Well, this project will put the framework in place. So there'll be other questions we have to iron out first before we can actually use it.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Carmen. Any other questions for Anna or Mark on this appropriation? So Anna, we're appropriating the amount of money to be received, but we have to spend this first before it gets received, correct? Is that how this works?
Yes.
Okay.
So in something like this, typically, we use the CNRE fund. It makes sense because oftentimes, these grants overlap fiscal years, and that fund is set up to be, you know, a continuing fund.
I personally don't have any further questions, so I should thank Carmen and Mike for working on this grant. It's a great opportunity to upgrade our system, so thank you very much. There aren't any other questions. I'll entertain a motion from somebody.
Okay, I'll move to appropriate the Public Educational and Governmental Programming and Educational Technology Investment Account Program, parentheses, pegpisha, end parentheses, grant in the amount of $85,307.44 in CNRE Fund 32, for which corresponding revenue and expenditure accounts will be established, titled, quote, pegpisha grant, end quote.
Thank you, Ann Chakello. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Ann Santoro, seconds. And now we'll call for a vote. Ann Chakello?
Yay.
Ann Santoro?
Yay.
Peter?
Yeah.
Rich?
Yay.
John?
Yay.
And I myself am a yay. Motion passes 600. Thank you. Next item under new business is a discussion of the proposed 2021 budget presentations. The last time we came together, we ironed out a process and a calendar. Today, I'm thinking, Anna, is this about identifying which departments go on which days?
Okay, so you have the, your agendas, correct?
We have the agenda, yes.
It's a spreadsheet. It lists all the departments. Yes, that's it, Ann.
Can you hold that up again, Ann, please? Okay, yep, yep, got it. All right, does everybody have that?
Yes.
Okay.
It was in the packet?
Yes.
Okay. I'll keep looking. Go ahead, you can start.
It was probably attached to one of them that I sent to you.
Anna, would you happen to have this document on a laptop that you're using currently? Maybe you could share your screen with us, call this up and...
Actually, so when I use this laptop to zoom in meetings, I have to do it in one menu. If I, if I, if I, to use the, I have to log in remotely in the hall, and I won't be able to use, it's strange the way it works.
Okay.
So.
Maybe for the future, if you were to email me the documents, I could be able to share my screen so that we could have it on the side as we're discussing it.
I can do that.
That way, any attendees watching will know what we're talking about, too. Could be a really nice feature. Okay.
I'm on.
So, I mean, so the first meeting would be on May 7th, which is the Board of Ed. That's right at the top. So then the second meeting, which is the Saturday, May 9th, we thought it best to do all of the emergency management, all the public safety departments, as well as IT, and then all of the, like, other departments that Joe Bregaw oversees, because he was going to be available for that meeting, and hopefully, we'll get them all done on that Saturday. And then listed below, we have, like, capital, the Capital Improvement Plan, for selectmen, judge of probate, Department 114, which is our general government miscellaneous benefits department, services to the community, finance department, and Board of Finance. Just added all those departments on the 9th, because if we have time, let's go through them. They don't require any other department heads, because Mark and/or I would be able to handle those. And then we have all the other departments in the budget listed to deal with on the 11th. And then what I thought we could do is, like, starting with the first selectman down to Board of Finance, we could put those on the agenda of the 11th in the event that we didn't have enough time to deal with them on the 9th. That was just kind of like my thought process, but of course, this is open for discussion. Everyone is silent.
The only, the only comment I would have on this schedule is, can you please include in one of those columns everybody's email address for me? So when I set up the meeting, I'll be able to invite those people. And I will give them instructions to try to be available within a certain time slot. So if they don't want to come to the entire meeting, if they are, can be on call, so to speak, maybe that's the way to handle this, so they're not all on the Zoom meeting for the entire day. Does that make sense?
Yeah, we can do that.
Okay. I mean, I really believe this is a whole lot to cover in such a short amount of time, so I don't even know what to say about how this is going to go. I'm just hoping for the best.
Yeah, my thought would be that as we are approaching a budget that is to be reviewed, that I would send a text message out to the, to the department head to jump on, that they're coming up next. And so as we're doing this, we, I could be zipping, you know, text messages out to the next group of people coming in. So they will flush in as the others will flush out.
Oh.
So they're not in here all day. Doesn't make sense. They would need that invitation from you on the Zoom instructions, but they all know how to do it, because we're on Zoom at least twice a week
Right.
with one another. So we won't have a problem. But again, you know, they will either be working, or they'll be on the weekend or whatever. But, yeah, I'll make sure that they are present as they're being called up, and we'll know the order. So this will flow very nicely.
Okay.
I mean, a lot of the departments, if you look at the list of the departments on the 11th, a lot of them are, like, the series in, like, 127 to 139, those are a lot of the commission budgets, and several of them are $1,000 budgets in total, because it's more or less just, you know, a recording secretary line item, and then a miscellaneous supplies line item. So there's not really a lot in those departments, so those shouldn't be very time-consuming.
Okay.
That's good.
Okay. So what our commission members need to do when we, Mark Nickerson, I think that your board is meeting, no, you finalized the budget on Monday night. So when can our board members get the revised budget information?
It's available. Anna can send it out. It's not a revised budget. It's suggested cuts. You know, we weren't sure if we could go back and change the budget again once we've already voted on it and sent it to you. So, but it's revised cuts that you would go ahead and make those cuts. And, but, yeah, that's just semantics. Bottom line is, we have the cuts available. I think they were published the other night, so Anna can send those out.
Right. Okay, so, so not really semantics, because then, what I know we have to do is, any recommendations that we will make will be based on the original proposed budget. So if they're just suggestions and not a budget that you're passing on to us, any adjustments that we make will be based off the original adopted budget. So, for example, you know, if the original budget had $100 of supplies, and you cut it down to 95, and we make a motion to adjust the budget of supplies by another $5 downward, then we would be making it off the $100, not the 95. In other words, we would adopt your suggestion. So it's kind of important that we understand that so that we know that our adjustments are coming off the correct base number, if that makes sense.
And the bottom line is the bottom line. So, yeah, it's, it's, it's your perspective. It's, I'm not trying to be difficult. It's just, the bottom line is, there's going to be cuts. We acknowledge that. We wanted to suggest the cuts that you should focus in on. And, and I'm sure we'll have lots of discussion, but the thought also was to aid you in this, because we're waiting later in the season, and also, you have an abbreviated session that this would guide you and the rest of the members to get to an appropriate number.
Very good. Okay. Does anybody have any questions for Anna with regard to this, the proposed scheduling of the different town departments? Is there any further discussion on that new business item E? Okay, hearing none, we'll move on to old business. If we could get a public safety building update, I don't know if Ann Santoro, as a member of that vision committee, wants to give that.
Sure. I have a little update to give, Camille.
Brilliant.
Yeah, so, well, this, you know, I think overall, good news. The bids for the project were opened last Friday, the 24th of April, at 2:00 PM, and the bids have been tabulated by Silver Petraselli, the architect. That's part of their responsibility to help us with that. And you can actually see them tabulated, because I don't think they're posted yet on town website, but you can see them at the bid website, which is on the state website. And I think I'd given it to you previously, but if you don't have it handy, it's biznet, B-I-Z-N-E-T, one word, dot C-T dot gov. And the solicitation is number 2020-01 for the Town of Eastline Public Works. So it was very interesting, because we had nine bidders who submitted bids, which is, you know, really great, all things considered. And of course, you know that construction is still considered an essential activity, so it has not halted. So I would have expected something solid anyway, but this is very good, considering everything else happening. And, well, in fact, we had the pre-bid walkthrough over at the facility before the shutdown. It was packed in that room, so it all makes sense to me. My impression is that there's tremendous consistency in the bids. There's like one outlier, but they really are all pretty consistent. And they gave a base bid, and then, you know, an add, a bid add alternate for the elevator, and a bid deduct for the cells. So, and if you look at Silver Petraselli's February estimates, which was their last batch of estimates, they were very accurate, actually. So that was, that was very good. And overall, the bidders, it seems like, can, once they get the green light, can start the project very soon. There's no long delay there. Of course, the bid prices, you know, are just good for so many days. So you have to look at each individual bid response to figure that out. But, you know, they tend to be, you know, a couple of months long, max. Some might even be shorter. I haven't looked at every single one. Tomorrow, the Vision Committee will meet, and by Zoom, 6:00 PM, and will begin that process of evaluation, the review process, and determining And we'll begin that process of evaluation, the review process and determining our steps ahead. We should, you know, I think we most likely will have some recommendation, as Mark indicated, within one to two weeks. So we'll recommend the actual, you know, contractor and then also the scope. If we think we should, you know, add that elevator. No matter what the space for the elevator is in the design. But the question is, you, you know, since we're just dealing with one floor at this point, do you bother putting in that ex, the actual cab? If you recall. And also should we, you know, do the, the cells, the Sally port? It's in detention. So, yeah, so I think, and basically then we would make that recommendation, board of selectmen will consider, decide. And then thereafter, any additional amount of money that would need to be appropriated would have to be approved of by, of course, by board of finance. So, you know, on, you know, in terms of how long all this will take, you know, there's different end dates for the different contractors who submitted bids. Some as short as, you know, you could be in there end of January, others longer. And of course, it depends on whether you're doing the cells or not. So I just, I was just reflecting on the whole process and realized that the vision committee started its work early last March of, of 2019. So we've come a long way, you know, and, but I was encouraged by, by the, by the bid prices. And as I said, lots of consistency. So that's a good thing. And I think we're, I think we're financially in better shape than I thought we would have been, let's say, a few months ago. So, but you can follow our vision committee, you know, meeting. And as I said, if you want to see those values, there's a, a matrix tabulation on that site. That's very clear to read. So, yeah, and I think, you know, overall, as I said, it's a, it's, I think, a positive news. I think we were all pleasantly surprised that we weren't, you know, you know, millions over or something. So, so pretty good news.
Any questions for Anne Santoro about the PSB project? I had some questions, Anne. Well, can you tell me what the, what the differences between the lowest and the highest cost bid?
Sure. So lowest, the base bid, which would actually include the cells, because that's a bid deduct, is a little over $3 million, like $3,810,000 plus dollars. The, the high, the, the one that's the, the total outlier, nothing else looks like this, was a $5,700,000 and change. And every, all the bids pretty much are in that low 3 million, either at 3 million, slightly over. So, you know, there isn't much difference, you know.
Did the, did the low cost bidders attend the walkthrough of the building? When you had, when you hosted that forum, what was that in February?
Yeah, that was, whatever that was, it was sometime, well, it might've been in, end of February, beginning of March. I can't recall that date. But I don't, I never saw the actual list of, of the attendees. But Silver Petraselli has that list because there was a sign in. So I would think they would just because there's so much detail you have to, you know, absorb and, you know.
Right. But there was that special clause, I guess, in the RFP. Is that my feedback?
Is that my feedback?
Is that better? Okay.
Yeah.
There was that clause in the RFP that went out that said they didn't have to be present in order to put forward a bid. So I would be very interested in knowing that low cost bid of just over $3 million. Did they actually do the walkthrough? The high cost bid of $5 million, did they actually do the walkthrough? So whatever, I, I mean, I understand that your vision committee is going to make a recommendation to the board of selectmen. But in that recommendation, I would hope that attention would be paid to, you know, whether they were actually at the site and understood the exact hope of the project.
Sure. There's a really, you know, large rubric, if you will, of, of points of consideration when you're selecting a contractor. Some of it actually appears in our purchasing policy. But there's also general, general forms that you use for that. We used a similar form, such as that, when we chose the, the architect. So those kinds of things, yeah, I mean, how familiar is the contractor, you know, with this type of work? Their experience, it goes on and on, and all the different requirements. It's in terms of the bid response, it's, they all were responsive, meaning they had to literally plow through all of the detail from the architect in order to make an appropriate bid. And to get a bid, a bid bond, for example, as well. You can't go, go and get a bid bond if you're just willy nilly saying, I think I can do this at a really good price. It doesn't happen. So I think, I think we've shrunk that world of, of, you know, strange and odd bidders. You know, I think this is, this is reality, you know, so.
Okay. And one final question I had, maybe this is a good time to bring this up again. At the January 7th PSB Vision Committee meeting, I submitted a spreadsheet of different costs associated with this project. Who's actually tasked with completing that spreadsheet on your committee?
Yeah, I, I don't think we've, we've assigned it to anyone. I think we're just, where we're at with, with the, with the selection. And I recall looking at it and I thought, you know, quite a few of the questions or issues could be gotten by way of our, our knowledge now and certainly architects' information, you know, because the.
So just a gentle, just a gentle reminder, Anne, that, you know, as you come before, not you, but the vision committee, maybe the chairman will come, maybe it'll be Mark proposing this. But as you come before our board, you know, that would be a piece of documentation that we want to see before we would appropriate any additional funds. And of course, I would have to go out to the town, you know, which, because I'm sure it's going to be in excess of $10,000. So that would require town approval also, but that is the documentation that we are looking for in order to move it past our board. So I thought that this would be a good opportunity, time to just remind you folks of that.
I'll remind you that during these times, through the executive order, there is no town meeting or referendum. So it will go to the board of selectmen and the board of finance. And those questions that were submitted by you personally, I don't think by the commission as, as a whole, have been received and I believe they're being, they will be worked on.
Okay.
So we'll try to.
Well, I'm just not sure when we would be receiving this appropriation request and how long the order is in place. Not, you know, there was an order not to have a town referendum for the budget process, but this is outside of the budget process. So.
All appropriations.
All appropriations for the remainder of the fiscal year or does it?
Bonding until the executive order is lifted. So including bonding or any other special purchases. You know, it could be a town that might be going through a school renovation. All of that is, is suspended for this.
So I guess, I guess my, I guess my thought process is by the time that you come to us asking for the appropriation, it might be well beyond the time that the order is lifted.
I, I would think it's going to be in the next couple of weeks, just so you know.
You're, you're going to come before the board of finance in the next couple of weeks?
Within the month. We just received bids. Yeah, yeah. This project is alive and well.
Okay. All right. That would be great. I would love to see the process move a little quicker. So that would be fantastic. All right. That's all the questions that I have for that. For that, if anybody else has any questions for Anne Santoro?
Yes, Anne, did I hear you mention that, that low bid had included the cells and that would be a subtract?
Right. So the way the bid deducts work, so that, that value, let's say it's $3,817,500. I'm just looking at it at my chart here. So that company would, if they were not to do the cells, that would be a deduction of them by $734,000. For example, that's the value that they put on, you know, on the Sally port and detention and cells. So, so that's what, if you, if you did the math there, that's, that would answer your question.
Right. And, and so consequently to the elevator is included in all these bids as well?
No, because you, those, that's a bid add. So there's different ways of putting out the, your, your solicitation. So there's different thinking behind having it as, which I won't get into, a bid add or a bid deduct. But in the case of the elevator, that was a bid add. So if we wanted to do that and those values, you'll see vary. There's a little more inconsistency with bid adds and it shows up. You can see that. Tends to, it, it shows up in, 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 in the values that each of the nine bidders has assigned to adding the elevator cab. And it's just the cab. It's not the, we'll call it the guts of the building. That would be completely wrong, no matter what.
And essentially, if I understand correctly, all the bids have the cells and Sally ports as a subtract bid.
Yes, exactly. Yep.
And then in addition to the, the price variance, which it sounded like, except for that one outlier, they were all pretty uniform. Or the, the date of completion, was there much variance in that?
Um, you know, okay, so I have, you know, basically, you know, a, I would say calendar days. We were in, you know, a low of maybe 210 days to, you know, to a high of 330. And then there's different, you have to add or subtract days based on your bid add and bid deduct as well. You have to do that math too. But, um, yeah, I mean, you know, when I sort of did it, you know, month wise in my head, it was kind of, oh, potentially, you know, end of January to, it could be to, you know, months past that. You know, could be definitely months past that, you know, so it would be. But I can't, it's hard for me to say because, again, we have to, still have to go through the process. We have to, you know, vision committee, board of selectmen, board of finance. And then you give them the green light. And usually the green light is when you've actually negotiated that contract or at least put it in place based upon the bid document. So, but that, you know, 10 days and most of them were kind of like in the 10 day range for starting.
Okay. And then two, two final questions. Would the building be able to be partially occupied before that final completion date? Because one of the concerns we had was to get our police out of that sick building as quickly as possible. And it's been well over a year since we started this process.
Right. So that's, I think that's a question best answered by Chief Mike. It's, it's come up a couple of times. I think because of our communications piece, that is so important and, you know, so important to have a seamless communication that you want to get in there and all get in there at the same time. So you don't want dispatch hanging out here and police over there. But it doesn't rule out that possibility. And what that would exactly look like, he'd be the guy to ask that question to. But I think you have to be very careful of that, you know, because you cannot have interrupted communication with public safety. You just can't. So that's really important.
And then the, the final question, is there a clause in the bid that if they finish early, there's a bonus or if they finish late, there's a penalty?
You know, I can't recall off the top of my head, but Mark might speak to that or Anna. I can't, I just, I don't think we, I don't think there was necessarily incentive that was put in there. But I could check that out, but I, I don't recall that, you know.
Okay. Thank you very much, Anne.
Sure, sure.
Mark, did you, did you have an answer to the Rich's question by any chance? Is there a bonus if we finish early or penalty?
I don't know about that. I wasn't involved with the bidding. The vision committee was solely responsible for that. As I'm, I'm voting on their decision. But I do know that they can't move in before we complete the building. And we, we were hoping they could or even partially. But that whole, and Anne hit it on the head, it's that communications link, that everything has to be moved over to that. And it's, it's quite complex. It's, and, and really, we can't do it halfway. So it is, it is something we'd love to do because that building is only worse now. And we're, and, and roofs in very, very tough shape with all this rain we've had. So we'd like to get out of there. We do have a, a couple of contractors who have their sleeves rolled up and, and the top two bidders, two low bidders. And they're ready to go. They want to start within 10 days of being awarded the contract. So, you know, there's work out there. There's construction companies out there that are finding because of this, a pocket in their schedule. We should take advantage of them.
So thank you for that answer, Mark. Rich Steele, I, I think I would just recommend putting that on the action list as an open item. You know, your question. And maybe, maybe you could reach out to Chief Inglestein to see if he has, or, or maybe Paul Daigle to see about the bid. Penalty if they finish late, bonus if they finish early. I think that's a really excellent question. Because if we're talking 210 to 230 days, that's a long time to begin with. Lots can happen in that time period. So I think that's a great question.
I, I would just like to point out another good thing in the selection process is that Silver Petraselli also weighs in. They weigh in in terms of their assessment of the bids, independent, you know, sort of in parallel or independent from the vision committee. There'll be, you know, a sort of conversation at some point very soon. And the, the architectural firm is, or Silver Petraselli, it's very, you know, familiar with some of these bidders. So some of these contractors, you know, project wise, et cetera. So, so that's a good thing too. So that's in the mix and I think that's a positive thing, you know.
How much money have we paid Silver Petraselli today?
I don't have that. Anna might have that available. I just don't have that information handy. Yeah. She might have that.
There are fees that we've paid already and there are fees, of course, going forward are not included in, in this three plus million dollar. That's just for the contractor doing the work. So there are a number of costs that still are associated with this project that we need to get our arms around. And I think, I think you had a class code at one time, correct? That you were able to run a report for us capturing all the expenses for the PSB?
You're, you're muted, Anne.
Johnson?
Okay. I'm sorry. I'm unmuted. Yes, I can get that information for you.
Okay. Okay. Great. Thank you.
These are all the functions that they're doing, the architects, is all part of the contract.
Yes, absolutely.
Every unit they're performing, there is all part of the contract. And we expanded their contract to include an inventory of furniture and all that. So we expanded that, that. But it's not a per hour basis. It's not a.
Right, right. Right. But we haven't really seen that. We haven't really seen those dollars anywhere. And I think it's important for everybody to understand they're not part of this $3 million figure that might come forward.
Yeah. And just to allay concern, we're not talking hundreds of thousands of dollars with them. It was a very reasonable fee and the inventory piece, I think, was not even, was maybe 25, 27,000, you know. Was, you know, I think we were, Mark, do you remember that? I have to, I'll have to go back and remember my, my total there. But we, you know, a very reasonable fee for the degree of service and the product that, you know, I have to say. And they have been A plus. I give them an A plus.
Yeah. But, well, that's good to know. And I'm not questioning, I'm not questioning the quality of their performance at all. I'm just looking for the most transparent accounting of this project. That's all. So thank you. If there's no other questions, let's move on to action item list. Rich Steele, is there anything that is hanging out there that we still need to discuss that?
Not that I recall. I have to admit, I didn't double check tonight before I came on, but I, I think we're okay. I don't. Not that I recall. I have to admit, I didn't double check tonight before I came on, but I think we're okay. I don't think I put anything else in there.
Okay, well, you have one to add to the list tonight.
Yes.
Okay. With that, let's go around and see if anybody has any comments that they would like to make before we close out the meeting. We'll go in alphabetical order. How's that, John? Birmingham?
No, I don't.
Okay, Anne Chappell?
No, not at this time.
Pete DeRosa?
No, I'm just looking forward to the budget process and hoping that's an efficient process.
I hope so, too. Okay, Rich Steele?
I'm fine, thank you.
Okay. I would just like to say that
You skipped Anne.
I did. Which Anne?
Anne Santoro.
Anne, I'm so sorry. Any comments?
I'm just, I'm looking forward to beginning the budget process and getting into it and getting it completed. We've kind of had this bifurcated or truncated system at this point or process. So it'd be good to begin it, do it and end it, you know, really. That's it.
Well, I just want to say, you know, I'm really appreciative of all our first responders. I mean, I I just can't even say how grateful I am for their service, you know, and their dedication during these troubling times. Town employees, I'm grateful for what I hope is, you know, extreme flexibility during these times. And and the Board of Ed, you know, my my heart goes out to them. I know it's a very difficult time. And I hope that they can get a plan together that will, you know, really easily meet the demands of maybe a distant learning environment in the future. So with that, I'll just say, I'll just repeat, tomorrow night at five P M, the Board of Ed is going to be meeting to finalize the budget that they are going to propose to the Board of Finance. And at six P M, the Public Safety Building Vision Committee will be meeting, both on Zoom, if anybody would like to attend. The next time we will come together is May seventh for a Zoom meeting. And I really hope that this can go as smoothly as possible. And I actually like the way we're conducting this. I wouldn't mind if it went forward like this forever. That's all I have. So if there's no other comments from anybody, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Thank you, Anne Chappell. A second. Second from John, I think. All right. So let's just say, all those in favor, say aye. All right. Thank you, everyone. Have a good night.
Thank you.
Talk to you soon.
Bye bye.
Bye.